Okay. Raquel, you're good, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thanks Maria. I'd like to call toward the October 8th zoning board of appeals meeting. I'd like to introduce the board members. On TV, we have Dylan Stella, who's an alternate, but who will be seated tonight as a regular member. To my left is Bill Pigott, a regular member. To my right is Dennis Crowe and John Zire, both regular members. To remind everyone, four votes are needed for an application to be approved. That any and all items used are exhibits and will be retained in the file. After the applicant's presentations made, the board will ask questions they may have, and then the audience may have questions they may have. After the discussion, we'll ask for anyone to speak in favor of or against the application. The presenters or audience speaking are asked to give their name and address the first time they speak, and then just their name any subsequent time when the application is being heard. We'll close the public hearing and the board will go into deliberations. At this time, no additional testimony to or from the audience can be permitted. And usually, we make a decision following the deliberations. So I'd like to ask our zoning officer, Maureen Vitola, to please read the application for tonight.
The legal?
Yes.
Legal notice, Madison zoning board of appeals, Madison, Connecticut. Notice is hereby given that the board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. At 7:00 PM, the meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting in Room A, Town Campus, 8 Campus Drive, and remotely as a Zoom webinar. Attendees may join the webinar through either the webinar link or call in information below. www.zoom.us webinar ID 92002702103, password 388818, or call in at 1646-558-8656. Madison zoning board of appeals, application 24-13, Seven Park Avenue, MAP 16, Lot 72, R, Zone R5. Owner applicant, Francois Jackson Williams, revocable trust, Francois Jackson Williams trustee. Variance request to Section 3.6A to allow 21.5-foot front setback where 25 feet is required. 3.6B to allow 12.5-foot open porch setback where 20 feet is required. 3.6D to allow 7 feet setback where 12 feet is required. And 3.8B to allow 1,004 square feet of coverage where 880 square feet is required to reconstruct a FEMA compliant house. And Section 11.2 to allow relief from accessory building setback. Application includes a coastal site plan. Further details, including application materials, are posted on the Town of Madison website, www.madisonct.org, under the calendar link to the meeting. Questions and or comments can be emailed to the land use office at landuse@madisonct.org up to 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Dated this 10th day of September 2024, Richard Gilbert, Chair. This was published twice in the source on September 26, 2024, and once on October 3, 2024.
Thank you, Maria. So this time, I'd like to ask the applicant for 24, application 24-13, Seven Park Avenue, but please go ahead and...
Would you guys like the CDs, the CDs? In front of you, off to the side?
We can also present on the screen if you feel it's much easier. What do you like to see?
Probably on the screen.
Okay, so you can bring up the architectural plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Russell Campaign with CK Architects. I'm here with Mike Harkin, Harkin Engineers, and we're here to represent Francois and John Williams, who own Seven Park Avenue, and have asked us to design a renovation of their existing home to turn it into a full-time home. They're planning to move up here full-time. It's been a seasonal cottage that they've had. Or I'm sorry, it's a heated cottage, but it's, they use it mostly during the summer for quite some time they've owned it. And so...
Basically, to orient you, actually, can we go to the last page of my submission, which is the photos? That's going to be the easiest. So the site is very small. It's about 4,400 square feet, and it's sort of tucked in with similar homes on the north and the south side. And it has a FEMA line that sort of comes through the middle of the site diagonally and touches the front corner of the building, putting it into a limwa zone. And so a limited wave action zone basically has VE zone requirements on the home. And so in order to basically do anything to this, because the 50% rule associated with investing in it would really trigger a full upgrade, which means it needs to go up on peers and have breakaway walls and such. So really, and then the existing cottage, although it looks, and they had done a pretty significant renovation on the second floor, they had not really done any improvements to the structure of the first floor of foundations when they did it. And so they're really evaluating what would need to happen to bring this into conformity and its location. It really wasn't a feasible option. So we did take the route of taking it down and rebuilding it. And in doing so, we can bring it into full structural compliance, full FEMA compliance. We're planning to move it back on the lot so it's in the still water flooding zone and not in the wave action zone, so that we can not have to go as high and actually take it out of harms way. The attitude, I'm showing the proposed versus the existing, is very similar. They love the home, they love the views, they love the positioning. And so we took a lot of clues from that, but it is a little taller, given how we have to raise it up compared to what it was before. So if we can go back up to the site plan, I'll walk this through, and then we'll come back to the accessory structure. So the first variance is associated with the front setback. This dotted line here is showing the existing footprint of the front porch, and we're planning to move the house back 5.25 feet compared to what's there now. So we are asking for a variance, but we're improving the situation. We're constrained to move it back any further, because the only place we could fit a septic system to bring it up to code is sitting right here, sandwiched between our accessory structure and our new proposed footprint. So basically, we're able to push the building back, but not really go any further to bring it into greater conformity. The next variance is associated with the open porch, similar to the front setback. So in that case, we're reducing the existing non-conformity by 2.1 feet. So we still need to seek a variance to allow for 12.5 foot where 20 foot is required, but we are improving the situation again by moving it back. It's also bringing us out of the FEMA zone. But that's just in relation to the depth of the porch compared to the second-story dormers, which currently cantilever over the porch. So that's, we're not going to cantilever them in the new design. So the dormer is going back further. The front face of the porch is going back 2.1 feet. And then on the north side of the property here, we are improving it slightly, 0.2 feet. But we're very constrained with our ability to actually have a place to park a car. So we have sort of a 12-foot setback on this side that just is enough to bring a car in on that side. Otherwise, we really wouldn't have another alternate location other than the front yard to pull in directly. And there's a little bit of a grade change and such, and I don't think the street necessarily wants frontal parking there. So this allows for a car to fit there. So we're 7 feet on the north side where 12 feet is required, and that's a reduction from 6.8, which is the current setback. So we're reducing it by 0.2. And associated with hardship for the lot coverage, we're reducing the overall lot coverage on the property by 31 feet. Again, a slight reduction. It's 1,035 square feet of coverage. And, you know, the overall house is 1,750 square feet plus or minus. So it's a very constrained lot. There's not much size here for a full-time home. It's very modest still. But we didn't have really much ability to make it much smaller and still make it a viable home. So again, we're reducing, but still need to carry forward an existing non-conformity for this. And the last is associated with the accessory structure. So there's an existing garage that's closer to the property line on both sides and rear. We are reducing the scale of that building in order to reduce that non-conformity, but still have some outdoor storage. It won't be able to house a car or anything. But the way, this is a little confusing, the way that the zoning regulations work is the setback is determined by the height of the eve of the structure. It's a 45-degree line from the corner. So we're asking for a setback relief, even though it's height that's determining it. But the height of the structure is a typical 8-foot plate height and an eve that overhangs. And so if we go to the last page of my presentation, you can see here, here's the diagonal lines coming off of the two sides, and you can see the existing structure dotted. So in both cases, we're reducing the non-conformity. So on the rear, on the rear side, we're reducing it by 2.8 feet compared to the existing garage. And on the south property line, we're reducing it by 2.7 feet. So in both cases, both making the footprint of that smaller, the shed smaller, and reducing its non-conformity by basically pulling it back from the side property line, maintaining a similar height, which is really a viable shed. You start to get much lower with the eve, and it's not really, you know, going to give you much storage. So we go back up to the second page. So just for orientation purposes, second page, third page, this is the existing site plan. The layout of the home is very simple. There's a front porch that's open on the front, not planned to be screened. You come in, an open-plan living room, kitchen, bath and mudroom entry with a stair going up. Very minimalist in its layout. There's really not much place that we can squeeze. Very small back porch that comes down to a patio that sits over the septic system and the shed that's in the back. We're hiding garage, I'm sorry, the trash cans and a propane tank in the back. Utilities will be hung off the side, and the generator's in the same footprint sort of setback as the rest. So that's under the same setback variance for the north side for us, is the generator. And then the upper stories, you come up, there's the two bedrooms and a private bath, stair in the middle and a den in the middle. And then you come up to the third, and there's sort of a livable attic space that's sort of open, has an overlook down the staircase. Very low headroom condition up here, but it does add a little bit of useful space up there. We're compliant with regard to height and average roof with what we're proposing. And I think it's in keeping with the adjacent neighborhood with what we're proposing. I think it'll fit in well, still cottage in its field, still has a lot of the characteristics of the original cottage. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding our approach to this.
Do you guys want to review the site plan? Or do you want to ask questions and then move on to the site plan after?
Well, the postal site plan is separate. That's going to be my...
I was going to ask for the actual zoning board application.
Did you put that up? Sure.
Sure. I think you've covered most of the stuff that's in it.
Yep, no problem. Okay, so this is the zoning information as far as the lot and the location, the ownership. Reading through this, we're planning to demolish the existing non-conforming that sits in a limwa A13 zone and move it back on the property so we can sit in a still water flooding zone to be FEMA compliant. We're reducing the non-conforming building coverage by 31 feet. We're reducing the existing non-conforming front porch setback by 2 point, or we're increasing the setback by 2.1 feet. Principal building front setback will be increased by 5.25 feet. The existing non-conforming side setback will be increased by 0.2, and the existing non-conforming detached garage will be demolished and replaced with a smaller tool shed, moving its footprint into greater conformity with the height setback. This stalls out, so we're asking for relief from 3.6A, B, D, B, and 11.2, which lays out the various setbacks, the coverage, and then the relief from the accessory building setback. The, I think the site is existing non-conforming, so it is, you know, a hardship associated with it being an existing non-conformity. The shed, I'm sorry, both the shed and garage and house were built prior to zoning in this area. It's a very small lot at 4,442. It's in a FEMA zone and in a limwa zone, which is forcing sort of a major redo of the property in order to bring that into compliance. And we have septic, which again is being brought in successfully now. It's being brought into conformity. It's near the shore, definitely a benefit on the plan of conservation development and town plan. Literal enforcement of the regulations would really render, I think, the site unusable for it to be a home. It would, with the lot coverage and floor area ratio, it'd be, you know, really unusable. So bringing that prior non-conformity forward into this project and reducing it slightly, I think it's the avenue that is the only feasible avenue to have continued use of this property. And how is the, how is our proposal in harmony with the general purpose of the regulations? I think, again, we've taken care to sort of look at the existing home, how it fits in context with the adjacent homes, and design something I think that will feel appropriate and in keeping with the neighborhood, yet still viable, safe, and better for the environment with a septic. We did have two variances that were granted associated with the prior that really actually, if you, if they were written correctly, actually probably would have, would have, we wouldn't need to be before you. But when they were granted, they mixed up the north property and the south property lines in the way it was written. So they granted a 7-foot relief from the north, but it should have been on the, or vice versa. And it was very, so we decided when we met that it wasn't something that we really could want to argue or bring that forward. So we decided just to start over and get new variances for the property. But this has been granted when they did the dormer change on the second floor, and they were actually granted more front setback at the time. There wasn't an open porch setback. So that wasn't granted, but the north and south property line setbacks were granted at the time. Both sort of in keeping, they just reversed them when it was written and put on the deed.
So in process of this, you're saying, okay, we'd like to cancel those and replace them with...
They, yes, I mean, they, I don't know if they're ever canceled. They're always there. But the way, well, first, they were under the old zoning. So the requirements were very different. Basically, it was one year zoning when they were granted that back. But the way that they just, it's very confusing, because there's two that were actually the same.
Corrected one or something.
But it wasn't corrected. So it was very strange. So they went for four of them. They got an issue. They put it on the deed. And then, but it was granting relief from the south property line when they needed it on the north property line. And then they came back and did it again for the same variances two years later, and it was reversed again. So we just, I don't know what the history is of the long time in the history back in '03. So we don't really have a record of that. So I think we should just move forward with our presentation of this and hopefully see the new, well-written variance that addresses all the issues.
I was just thinking of clarifying, if we just said, forget those.
Yes, I think, I think that would be our interest. So it is in a flood zone. We do have a coastal site plan. Oh, I don't know what happened here, but that should be, yes.
Yes.
And there are no, in the wetlands, within 100 feet of the property. This is an issue with your application, so this, we're not within 500 feet. We're not in the watershed boundary. And then these are the lot characteristics you can see.
So what were the circles?
So these are the, these are the ones that should be. This one, for some reason, both pop up black in the application.
When they try to fill it on...
Online.
Online.
This is the online version?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the fillable form makes an error. So they're indicating with the red circles that that's what the answer is.
Yeah. And we're not in an aquifer protection area. And then these are the statistics that are on our chart as well. We're compliant with regard to building height and average building height. And the proposed area is, you know, bringing forward the existing non-conformity.
That's it.
Rest of this?
Yeah, just to boil it up.
Would you mind going back to the page that had the, where you had the line where the limwa zone was?
Sure, yeah, that's on the site plan, the first page.
And so you're saying that this house was built before, prior to zoning? So since the house was put there, then this, this line was put on the property?
So, yes. So this is the FEMA line that distinguishes the A13 limwa zone with wave action. And then north of that diagonal line is an A12. And this corner of the porch is over that line and brings the whole building into the requirements of the limwa.
I see. So if you were to just rebuild it in place, you'd be in there and you'd have to...
We'd have to be three to four feet higher, because the structure is the lowest structure needs to be. And we'd have to be on a pure foundation system as opposed to a regular foundation system, which is much more costly. And so we are just sliding the house back in the same line, just enough to get us out of that. So that 2.1 feet that we're pushing back is basically enough to put us into the A, and that allows the house to be 5 feet low.
Thank you. Do we have it, Laura?
I'm sorry?
Do we have it, Laura?
About 3 feet, because it's the, it's the structural depth and the extra, well, it's an extra foot. A13, A12, plus the 2-foot structural depth. So it's upwards of 3 feet.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
It also really increases the stairs, you know, 3 feet is 6 treads, 6 feet a stair, you know, to get in and out of the house. It's like everything.
Maybe a little naive here, but have you ever, did you ever consider just raising the house as it is up? And then you would avoid all of these variances here, because you could rebuild in the same footprint and carry your variances forward.
So raising, we would still be in the limwa zone if we did that. So we would have to raise it that extra 3 feet. We would have to add the stairs. Does Madison have a buyer right, FEMA compliance? FEMA compliance, no. So many other towns do have the ability to raise a house, but I would have to come for a variance for you to raise the house to be FEMA compliant. Guilford has a staff approval system for a FEMA if it stays under the height, but Madison does not. So I still would be before you to raise the house to make it FEMA compliant.
Would it be just one variance?
Well, no, because we're non-conforming, and we're making the building higher within those non-conformities. So it really would be very similar, actually, because you're, I'd be increasing the non-conformity within a non-conforming setback.
So, yeah, because if there's a setback requirement and you raise the building, then you need to get variance for this again.
Yeah.
Isn't that correct, Maria? So, yeah, so it would be these variances plus raising it.
But even if you stayed in the same footprint?
Yes.
All of those other variances could stay with the house.
They're technically increasing, because they're increasing vertically.
Totally.
Yeah.
And I, we don't have variances. They're existing non-conformities. So arguably, there were variances granted, but they weren't written correctly. So we really are just basing this on the home was built prior to zoning. Zoning then was imposed upon it to make non-conformities, and those are a hardship associated with that continued use of a property. And so, you know, this, I think, is the path of least resistance for them. Definitely is better, I think, from bringing it more out of harms way by moving it back on the property. And really lifting homes, you still, if you raise the home, you're exposing it to more wind. You have to bring the structural upgrade to the whole house. And for a cottage that was built like this was, that just has sort of 4x4s every 4 feet, it's a really hard process to try and strengthen that home and then bring it up. We have to meet energy code if we do that, you know? So we have to bring an old cottage up to energy code. It's like, it's a cascade, and it's why you see so many homes unfortunately not being renovated. You see a couple that do, but then you watch what happens to the house after it's lifted. And it's basically all no-house. I mean, they're just done from the inside. So this, I think, grants, we are going a little higher to, you know, capture a little bit more floor area, but that's conforming, just to justify the investment and make it a little bit more usable. But it's still, it's only 1,740 square feet of living space. It's a very, very small.
Yeah, my only concern was the number. I mean, you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 variances here.
Yeah.
And our charter here is to, all right, if you've got 6 variances here, what have you given up, you know, to justify those variances?
Well, we've made every single one more conforming.
Yeah, but is it enough? Yeah, I mean, you still, I mean, the bottom line is still you got 6 variances. If you only had 1 or 2, but here you got 6.
Yeah.
And you've actually increased on a couple of them, made it more non-conforming.
No, every, everyone is production non-conforming.
Now, if you go to the accessory building, the existing is 5.7, and your proposed is 2.9, so that's an increase. And the accessory side setback, the existing is 6.5.
No, no, it's backwards the way it's written. So existing rear extends 5.7 feet past the 1-to-1 slope. Our proposed is 2.9, so that's a 2.8-foot reduction in non-conformity. So it's, it's not, because the setback is set by the height of that angle, it's backwards. We don't have a setback. It's not like we have to meet a 10-foot setback. It's determined by the height. So the way it's written, existing rear extends 5.7 feet past. So if you look at this...
Oh, so you're moving it in closer.
Moving it further away, so it's, you know...
I'm just looking at your table.
No.
I just copied your table, so, and it's, and it's right here, existing 2.2.
What was table? We need to see.
That's the average height. It's existing.
I'm not concerned about the height, yeah.
Well, so that, that's conforming now. So that, that one is increasing the height, but it is conforming, and that's mostly because of the...
We need to leave, so it can't be discretion.
Okay.
So...
You want to sit up with the grid, we can all see.
Sure.
Yeah.
On the application, he's...
Remembering the...
He's looking at the application. Which I think is...
Here?
Yes. Okay, so you were pointing to this 29.7 versus 22. That is the height, and that's got to be below 30. So we're still conforming. Okay, so where, what else were you?
No, I wasn't concerned about that. I was, I was looking at your table for the accessory rear setback. And that was existing at 5.7, and now you're 2.9.
So...
Can I, can I point out something? I see where you're going. I find that sometimes the setback differences are a little confusing, because on the tables here, they state how much non-compliance is. But on the other one, it states how far the setback is.
Yeah.
And it gets inverted, because in this one, you want it to decrease, but in the other one, you want it to increase.
Right.
The setback from the front, you want to, you want to increase the setback to be further away. But on this one, it's written as how much of a non-compliance do we have? Reducing that.
That was Maria.
So if you if you just look at our chart.
It's her fault.
It's my fault.
Bad.
Good.
If if you just look at this chart and you'd said, so the the current setback is five point four, are proposed is seven feet. So that is, no, actually, that doesn't add up right either. So it it's reversed. We're we're not conforming by the five point seven. And we're going to be nonconforming by two point nine when we're done, when we move the building further away.
Right.
So we're ending up being two point eight feet further from conformity. But it's not the same because the eve height is slightly different and that's what's setting our measurements. So it's not, it's it's very, that particular.
Yeah, that's confusing.
That diagonal line is very, but in all cases, we're reducing the nonconformity.
I'll believe you.
And I would, I would, um, I would say that really why so many variances are required on this particular lot is that it's forty four hundred square feet. I mean, it is the size of the lot, house is the size of the property. And that's been a continued use and it's similar to some other, but it is smaller than most of the other area project properties. But I do think that that is a particular hardship to maintain a useful site that you can build on. And so there is not too many other ways that that I think we could bring it further into conformity. It's it's a really tricky. But the big thing is the bulk of the house. So the we're conforming with regard to height and with, I'm sorry, with floor area. So we're fully conforming with regards to bulk of the house, which I think is important to say. And we're maintaining an existing condition on the north property and an existing condition on the south property. And we're and we're benefiting the town and the neighborhood by moving it further back. And we're bringing a conformity setback, which Mike will get into, which I think is a a real benefit to the town as far as granting this and allowing the investment of this to improve this property in this way will be a benefit.
Question on the maximum total building height. Regulations. Maximum total building height for narrow lots. And this property width is forty two feet, if I'm correct. And the proposed house width is twenty four feet. Is that correct? Proposed house width. With house.
Yes, yes.
I think so. So that comes out to about fifty seven percent. And and this particular table here says the maximum total building height would be thirty six feet. What table is that? So they lost two point seven one.
It's in the regulations.
He's he's in the regulations. So um. That might be, so so the narrow lot, you're saying percentage wise of the of the setback or the house width compared to the width of the lot.
Yes.
And it's triggered for narrow lots that are under the existing required lot width? In the zone.
I thought it means it had to be raised for FEMA.
I don't. Well, we. We are higher than what.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there is an exemption for FEMA, but we are potentially higher. But well, um, I think if if we find that that is applicable. I think we could, you know, modify our our design or to be compliant with that height. People.
The section?
Yeah, I guess.
So.
So what would you have to reduce the height now if it's applicable?
Eighteen inches, the peak would have to go down, I believe, or or just shy of that, I think. Um, which.
Well. Is that an exhibit?
Yeah, well, we're, so so that's the active current copy of the zoning.
Height limitation, two point seven.
Please.
Excellent job.
Brad, can you display that?
I'm getting, I'm getting there.
Okay. So forty two. House. High. So we're we're in the.
Oh, yeah.
So thirty six feet and average twenty eight feet. Okay. What is, and there's no exemptions, there's not even a FEMA exemption.
I thought there was, so.
For buildings in the floodplain, oh. Maximum total building and average height. For just from the original grade, it doesn't give an exception.
It doesn't give an exemption. I was taking it as that they were.
Okay.
Shall we measure them?
Well, we likely have to look at that, actually. I have, I. So. Okay. We'll have to look at that. So I don't know whether, I mean, if that is required for us, you know. Let me say, I'd love to move forward with our variances that we have before you this evening. Um, when it goes to building permit, we won't be able to build if we don't have variance for a height reduction. So I don't think that that imposes any real concerns. It's basically just a part, sort of lowering the pitch of the roof. If we were to go and look at the way that this is now. I think we're going to use the pick. Of the dormers and the main roof in order to just bring that into conformity. So when we go before, um, to get a building permit, you know, we would have a compliant situation.
Maria, does the does the fact that they'd be elevating it because of FEMA requirements provide justification there for another variance? I think I think that basically says that that thirty six.
That's why. I mean, I actually missed it too when we went over it, so. But like you said, the other variances asking, this would come through for building.
So I could reapply for another variance.
If you can modify.
We felt we wanted to pursue that. As, but but I think it can be a standalone situation because I can talk to the client about making a modification of the overall height of the project. We've we've designed this this way because we thought we could go to the thirty seven.
Yeah, I'd hate to, I'd hate to. Have to deal with separately though, because then we could say, well, no, you can't do it. Because you violate something, you don't have a variance. And I don't want to. You understand what I'm saying?
No. I I I don't see, um, I, um, I'll have to consult with them. But one of the challenges of arguing a variance on this particular piece, I thought that there was a little bit of an exemption associated with FEMA to encourage people to.
Which is, which is what I'm, which is what I'm thinking.
There isn't. But um, but what I would say is that if you took the existing house and you raised it up to be compliant with FEMA, the peak would be lower than what we're proposing. So it is a little harder to push for a variance to push it higher. In this case, we would be increasing on.
Yeah, part of how we were in approval for the plan is we then had to say that you can't make it that high.
I think it's, you don't have to say that because you're granting variances for the pieces that we're asking for variance, which are lot coverage and setback. The building department will grant a building permit if we don't have variance associated with the height. We have to be conforming with regards to height. So I don't think you need to say anything. As long as you don't feel that that changing the roof pitch is going to have an impact on your opinion of the other variance.
No, I I think normally what we do is we approve to build in accordance with the the design. And in that case, we couldn't couldn't say that because the design.
Well, I. For the variances that he's asking for in accordance with the plan. So the variant, the plans go with the variances he's asking for and it would, we did have something similar. That if it came back to me, then I would have to question the height if he didn't modify it prior to submitting the building permit. So he could modify the height prior to that and it would comply. He doesn't choose to modify, he can come back and ask for another variance for the height.
We can.
But the plans, the plans match, the variances match the plans. So.
Yeah, and we can always make our motion to say excluding the height design.
Right. I was just going to say that, yeah, we can say that.
We'll just say that the height has to be in. No. Just, we're just saying, meet all of those requirements.
Oh, they're nice to anyway, because they don't get a burning building.
Yeah. And then the septic. Septic.
Just Dylan, do you have any questions? Are you?
Um. Yeah. So.
Wait, 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 wait.
Hold on, Dylan, one sec.
Okay.
What, did you want to say something or you're doing the math?
Oh, sixty percent, oh, point three, okay, all right. So we could either narrow the house by a foot or or we could raise the house. Okay, all right. Or lower the house, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Or buy a Jason land, okay. I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead, Dylan.
Thanks. So besides the reduction in nonconformities, you would say the size of the lot is constitutes a hardship?
I would say the size of lots a hardship, the FEMA is a hardship, the septic constraints of getting a co-compliant septic on the property is a hardship. Um, and that it is an existing nonconformity that we are reducing in all cases.
I'm okay, thank you.
On the coastal site plan. Do you? Would you mind reviewing the coastal site?
Yeah, I should mind this here.
Okay, so great.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Michael Parkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of park engineering located at seventy eight Wolf Hollow Land in the town of Killingworth, Connecticut. Um, again, here tonight on behalf of our client for the project at Seven Park Ave in your town of Madison, Connecticut. Okay, so what you see here is our coastal area management site plan or coastal site plan. You know, if we start off with our location map, you know, we all know where Park Ave is based on the map. Um, you can see we have the survey, which was performed by Gessiken Associates. Uh, the site is located in R five zone. It's also known as map sixteen lot seventy two. And as Russ had said, it's a little over four thousand square feet or point one acre, so it's very, very small. Um, I had the easier job as compared to Russ's. Uh, Maria, if you can zoom in on the site plan. Uh, so again, as described by Russ, we're in an AE twelve and AE thirteen zone. We have the big bold line that you see here, which is the flood zone. Um, and then you have the limo that's down in this section. You can see as per Russ's discussion, we've moved the house back. The proposed house is shaded pretty dark, the two bedrooms. Um, and you can see it's right at the corner, right outside of that zone. Um, it's actually a difficult site in the fact that we have that zone line and we are constrained by that line. But we're also constrained by all the setbacks of the septic system to get a co-conforming septic system. We do have health department approval for a code conforming septic system. You can see the tank in the rear yard and the proposed system, again, in the rear lot sandwiched between the proposed shed and that existing house. Um, so we have the constraints here and here virtually squishing the house to what you see in front of you and what Russ had shown on his architectural site plan. In order to maintain the town of Madison's requirements for storm drainage, there is a little bit of impervious increase um, on the site, so we do have an underground detention basin out in front. So we checked the box with that. The overhead utilities for the house currently come in from the ever source pole across the street. It will continue to do so. It'll just be attached in this corner and we will have no aerial trespasses on any of the neighbors' properties. The water line, uh, the main is on the far side of the street, but we do have a gate valve on the property. We're going to connect into that gate valve and then come across into the proposed house. In the front section, we will have a asphalt area in the right of way. And then it will go to two stone strips for the car parking. Right now, they're really just driving on the grass, you know, for rains, if they're going to be living here full time, it's going to get muddy. But they wanted to continue with that old country feel with having those stone pads there. They also work as ground infiltration and detention. Um, so that actually worked out in our favor as well. Uh, in the back, you have the covered porch area with the emergency generator. And then you have the callouts for the first floor elevation, which will meet FEMA. And we do have a letter from DEP, uh, they had like three minor comments that we'll go over. One of us to ensure that their pertinences like the AC condensers and the generator and electric were raised to meet the FEMA requirements, which they are. And back, we have the proposed shed area that Russ was talking about with the description of the angles and stuff from the property line. And then we do have the propane tanks in the rear that will come and feed into the house from that location. We do have on the site as a requirement, we have the erosion control measures, which are the silt fence that comes around the whole property. We also put a note for state hay bales, um, in case they're needed. It's a pretty fat, flat site. Um, it's all grass. We we don't anticipate the need for state hay bales, but we have them on there if we do in case need them. We also have a construction entrance to be built in front, so we're not tracking any dirt onto the Park Ave private road. So really with that, that's the end of my presentation with the site plan. I'm just going to go over the notes. You may remember here a month ago or two months ago when we got the comments back a couple hours um, before the meeting, um, we got that again tonight, so it's all good. Virtually coming down the list under summary and recommendations and if Maria wants to pop that up. Uh, number one was to ensure the installation and maintenance of appropriate erosion and sediment control measures during the planned project. Uh, we have them as we had just gone over, uh, we will do so. Um, there's a note on there, if there's an instance where more are needed, that we have the right to tell the contractor to put more on there. The second is to ensure that the structures elevation, electrical and AC units meet FEMA AE twelve zone and local flood management standards. Um, that's the blurb that I just put in there at the end of my presentation that we've done that and we've checked that and we will um, check it again when the project is completed. We're required to put an ASBO drawing together and that will give the elevations of those structures. Um, and the last one is to ensure the storage tool shed has flood vents and is designed with breakaway walls. This one's a little wonky. Um, you know, we could put the flood vents in there. I don't think we have a problem with that, but how do you really design breakaway walls on a shed? You know, I mean, you really can't put lattice work and lattice work together. Um, my belief, and I can't say for sure, is I I think that the reviewer believed that the whole project was in the limo zone. And if it was in the limo zone, everything would have to be to that effect. But um, we don't like putting the flood vents in, but we don't think we can construct a structure with breakaway walls. It'll just really collapse. So out of all three of those, we don't have a problem with it. We just like number three to be modified to no breakaway walls.
And it will be, um, there'll be duct billed anchors to avoid flotation. Uh, that's a requirement of the code, so they have hold downs associated with not having it float. But breakaway walls is not what FEMA requires.
Yeah, there's a lot of those little pertinences that are put in that we don't talk about, like the propane tanks will be strapped down with chains and anchors. Those are the things that have to be done per FEMA in a flood zone.
Thank you. So anybody? Thank you. So anybody, um, anybody have any questions about the coastal site plan? Dylan?
Okay, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you. Um, we, any, um. Anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor of the application?
You know what I, you know what I'd like to say first? Um, there was a letter that came in. It talked about the water rights, the water company rights. And I, I think. Yeah, it, it talked about water company rights.
Yeah, we received an anonymous letter.
It was anonymous, okay.
Today.
Yeah.
Um, but the easements are all.
Yeah, I think it was out into the road and it.
It, it has nothing.
Yeah, we have a A two survey that represents the easements and they're incorporated into our setbacks. We, we don't hold the easements. Um, so our front property line and our setbacks, all are dimensionally correct.
So even A, that the letter was anonymous. Indicated what? Relevance it has, I think we'll probably disagree there.
Okay, anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor?
Did you say that there would be questions first?
Yeah, or you can ask questions, sure.
I just have two, two questions to start and then I'll, that I'd like to speak.
Sure.
If you could. David Beecher, I'm next door at eleven Park Avenue. Uh, own the house next door to the Williams for. Fourteen years at this point. Uh, two quick questions for the architect. Just to be certain, the entire house, including the porch, is going west five point whatever feet?
No, the front porch is going back two point one feet. Currently, the dormer cantilever is over the top of the porch.
Right.
So that is gonna be aligned to the house, so the porch is standing in the same depth. But the door, the second floor of it is moving back three more feet. So it's five and change for the main house, but the front porch is only moving back two point one.
But still moving west?
West.
Selfish question, that's my view of the water through the porch.
Yep. And second floor will be improved by the fifth, by the five feet, because that's.
Wonderful. Uh, and just the, the generator, could you just, uh, that's gonna be in the corner. Closest to my living space, and I'm just curious what, you know, what the implications are relative to the generator for me.
Yeah, so, um, unfortunately, generators have to be raised above the FEMA floodline, and so. It has to be kind of on the house in some way and it has to meet the setback requirements. Um, so we're pretty limited. It has to be sort of on the house. So from a bench point, the way generator will work, it will probably cycle. And you can negotiate with Williams when that would be ideal to do. Um, they suggest once a week, but often people set them for more like once every two weeks or once a month. And then obviously, if there's an outage, it would be running.
I'm literally, with this one, I will literally be encircled by generators, so that's why I asked.
Well, you can get them all to go on at the same time, if you have your neighborhood to do that weekly cycle. The, um, but it is, uh, um, we are, um. It is a propane generator which is quieter than a gasoline generator and it does have a fiberglass, um, housing, uh, which is. A sound good ten, I mean, they still are, are loud, but.
I just, I just wanna check on that. So I, I don't know if you guys wanna ask questions or all just speak in favor at the same time? So I, I guess, you know, uh, from my perspective, I'm more impacted by this than anyone else. Um, obviously, there's a person behind them, but behind is behind. Uh, there's a person in front of them, but they're not losing that, which what we all love, which is the view of the ocean. So I'm impacted most. I, I, I think number one, you have. Uh, trying to accommodate all of the, the various, variant, um, issues relative to neighbors and such, and I appreciate that. Uh, second, I have tremendous confidence. That if anything comes up with this project, that I can speak to the Williams. They are probably two of the most. Low-key, humble, easygoing people in the entire town. So I know if there's anything that comes up, I can speak to them and I. I, I feel like I'm, they would be understanding and, and that gives me comfort. Uh, this will complete again an encircling of my house, the fourth house to be. Uh, torn down and rebuilt around me, so I've had experience with the others. It's been mixed with the others, I should say. But I have complete confidence in, in the Williams. And, and from my perspective, again, as the person who I think is most impacted by this. Uh, everything you have mentioned improves my, my situation, not. Uh, impacts negatively, so I guess from selfish perspective, I'm grateful for that. And, and the last thing, and if this is out of line, I apologize in advance. I don't see where there, where there should be an issue, whether it's two variances or twenty-two variances. If you're improving things and making it better for the neighborhood, then. I don't care how many variances there are, they all ought to be granted, so I, I understand your question, I think, but at the same time. If there are improvements, who cares what the numbers? Let's do them and make the improvements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Dee Dee Stones. My husband Doug, we are neighbors. We're at forty-three Middle Beach. Um, we live, um. Three houses town in front of the Williamses, um, four houses town from Dave. Um, we found them to be lovely neighbors. They adore this town. Her mother has a home in town as well and has for generations. I think if there was anything they could have done to save this house, they would have. We are big believers in saving cottages. We've saved a couple of them. As Maria well knows, um, and I think that it was just a situation of given the. Requirements, there was no way for them to do it without doing this. I, the design looks thoughtful. Um, it looks as though it will certainly fit in with the neighborhood. Um, my only question for you gentlemen is, is with the utilities coming in on the road. Park Avenue is a private road. I assume that they will then repave anything that they have to dig up to do to, to. Foot access into the new home. Um, so we, uh, my husband and I are in support of this.
Okay, thank you.
And I do agree with, um, Dave about the variances. I mean, the thing that's funny about this area. Is as you can see how the lot is, lots are very strange down there. They don't go square. They're angled and there's little cutouts and. You have six inches on one side that you don't have on the other side and. And that part of Madison was developed very, very early before there was any zoning, and I think that in many cases. When there has to be multiple variances, it's largely because of the non-conformity. And there's unfortunately, as a homeowner, not much you can do about that because your, our house was built in, um. No, this one, eighteen, eighteen sixty-three. I mean, there, it was just a different time and obviously the conformity issues. Don't work like they do with the development where you have someone coming in and building so many houses on so many lots that are all exactly the same square footage. So that's my only point on that, but we're fully in support of, of the Williams's proposals.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone on the internet Zoom? Have their hands up, right? Okay, so I assume that no one's gonna speak against, um, anybody or any other questions? Dylan, are you good? Any further questions or?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Um, Raquel had a question.
Oh, okay.
I just wanna make sure whose name.
Sure.
She was looking for any. I don't know whose Dee Dee she didn't get.
And can.
Yeah, can I just have both your names for the. Oh, from eleven Parker.
Eleven Park, David Beecher, B E E C H E R.
And it's eleven Park.
Yes.
Parker.
And it's Dee Dee, Dee Dee and Doug Stone, forty-three Middle Beach.
You like that?
So we good?
Yes.
Okay. And any, I'll make a motion then. Can, any, any final comments from the applicant?
Exactly.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Like to make a motion, we close the, uh, the public hearing and we move into deliberations.
Yes, all in favor, uh, any opposed? Okay, who wants to start? John, you want to?
Set us off? Well, I mentioned the height situation and, uh, also. I'm not exactly clear what the unique hardship is other than the lot size.
Dylan, do you want to go on? Do you like to go next?
Uh, sure, yeah, so I would be in favor of granting these variances, um. I think the reduction in, uh, non-conformities is good enough by itself. But I also think that the property does have some hardships, um, including its irregularly. Uh, a, a small size and, you know, the fact that a lot of the stuff has to be done to meet a FEMA requirements and the. Limo stuff, so I would be in favor of granting its variance. These variances.
Yeah, I, um. In general, I don't consider the, the fact that the lot is a small size inherently to be a hardship. But when you have a hardship that says, I gotta get these things in there and I gotta meet FEMA and I got everything else. Reducing non-conformances, I, I agree that that combined with the lot's small size then does make it a hardship, so I think I'd be in favor. So.
Dylan?
Well, I can't add anymore as to what Dylan said and Dennis, so. I concur with their observations and, uh, I would be in favor of granting. If they ferret.
Yeah, I'm in favor as well, and I think, uh, I think, uh, it's, there's. Reduction in every variance requested. I think it's a very modest request. I think it's definitely harming the, with the houses and not asking for a. Gigantic thing, but John, do you want to discuss your? On further, uh?
No, I don't.
I guess, like for me, and it, instead of the, the hardship, I'll get it as a reduction in several non-conformities.
Okay with that.
Okay. I'll make a motion, uh, if someone else would like to. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve application twenty-four thirteen, seven Park Avenue. To grant. A variance for three six A, three six B, three six D. Three eight D and section eleven point two. Uh, the variance is based on the fact that, uh, there are. Uh. Uh, there are reductions in all the existing non-conformities. And also the, uh. The, uh, lot size, uh, the lot size, I'm sorry, the lot being, the house being built prior to zoning. We feel makes it a hardship as well. Um, and that the variance is based on the plans as admitted, that our construction must conform to those plans. Now, we also find that the coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies with the coastal management. Give me a second.
I'll second that, I want to ask questions. Sure, cause, cause you second, then you discuss, right? Sure, um, I, I'm not sure I want to use the words. Design is constructed, if, unless we say, you know, and it, in, in compliance with. Zoning regulations, so if we get to two seven one, that, you know, that would, that would be our. Our way of saying, no, we didn't prove to violate the thing. We said they have to comply with zoning things. We'll come back and get a two seven ones, uh, variance later on, and then it'll all recover.
Yeah, but the thing is, I didn't list, uh, I didn't. Seven, that's why I just.
I know, I know, I know, but then you did say compliance with the design. The design is in. So we simply said compliance with the design and with, but, but within all local zoning laws.
Yeah, the thing is, Maria, this area, when they go to get a building permit, she. Just can't figure out the citation, she, they won't get a building permit.
Oh, they'll say all within the zoning requirements.
Thing is, I don't, I don't know if I wanna make this, oh, don't forget this goes with the land, so I don't know how complicated we would make this. Variance, uh, this, um, yeah.
Yeah, she has to.
Motion.
Yeah, they gotta go before the, uh, application for the building permit and that's on this one above.
So, so, I, I, I still think, I still think we ought to make a statement that says. You know, that basically says, you know, you got, you got zoning laws that may override the design. And, and that way, you know, we don't have some, what we give out blanket coverage to say, yeah, go ahead and do it according to.
Okay, the habit of we say, we, based on the plans except for the height. Would that be, excluding the height? That way we're leaving height.
That, that means the whole design has to change.
Can I make a suggestion?
And that creates a.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Courts with the design and, and in compliance with local zoning laws.
Can I make a suggestion? I think that, uh, Richard went about it. Um, I think Richard naming the specific variances he asked for was a, a good way to go about it. Um, approve variance requests and naming the ones that he passed for.
I like that.
Based on the non, you know, the reduction of those existing non-conformities and, and kind of, and leave it at, at that. And.
Yeah. So, you're saying accordance with the variances requested.
So you want me to, do you want me to take that out then?
The design.
The construction must conform with those plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
Truthfully, I mean, something else can change as far as a, a, a code requirement that wouldn't affect any of the variances, so. Um, you know, the plans are, are subject to change. They could, depending on certain, you know. Building code may not be the exact plans that are submitted tonight, so as long as they don't affect the variance that they can, that he's asking for. So I would just leave it at what he asked.
I think, you, you, you're probably right.
Now, if you're not good with it, I can strike that out.
I'm, I'm good. I'll pull, I'll pull back.
Um, um, any other discussion?
No, no, wait, was that, you did not, did you include the coastal site plan in that?
Yes.
Okay, then we need to say.
Oh, yeah.
Incorporate, incorporate the recommendations from, from deep, except for the number three breakaway walls.
Oh, okay.
I would add that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, this is all being recorded, Maria writes and things. Okay, so I'm gonna amend. That.
Also, so.
Take the whole coastal site.
Include these three.
Yeah, this coastal site plan is gonna include number one and two, but not number.
Well, number three.
The break was for portion of number three. We're, we're not, okay. Anybody want? Second then?
Could, but, is it, is it allowed to ask if you could?
Would you like me to do it?
Repeat the motion?
Sure, I will repeat the motion, so we're gonna strike that last motion. I would like to make a new motion to approve. Application twenty-four thirteen, seven Park Avenue. To grant. Variance for section three point six A, three point six B, three point six D. Three point eight B, section. section eleven point two. Uh, reason being, uh, one, reduction in existing non-conformities and B, the hardship because of the house being built prior to zoning. And I'd like to add that the variance is based on the plans as submitted and that the construction must conform to those plans.
That's not part, we were taking that out.
Yeah, take that part out.
We were taking that part out just based on what it was based on and then.
Based on the plan, okay.
No, 'cause that was the, that was Dennis's.
Sorry, everyone.
That's fine.
I'm gonna strike that and let's go for three. Three's the charm. I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-four thirteen, seven Park Avenue to grant variances for three point six A, three point six B, three point six D, three point eight B, and eleven point two, um, based on reduction of existing non-conformities and the hardship that the house was built prior to zoning laws. And also that we find that coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Impact.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon implementing the recommendations from Jeep. So except for number three with the breakaway, breakaway walls on the accessory building. Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's him, so. Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Sorry that took so long.
No worries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Dylan.
Approval of minutes?
Wait, wait, wait.
Yep.
Where are they? Oh, yes, so I'd like to make an approval, uh, a motion to approve the minutes due September tenth, meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's the answer. Opposed? Uh, motion, uh, Maria, any other business? I think we're done. Motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
Thanks, Dylan, for logging in. Thanks.
Bye, have a good night.
You too.